Thank you. Good evening all, I'd like to welcome you to the Village Council meeting of Monday, March 28th, 2022. Will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Present.
Commissioner Polk?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Milovich?
Here. Thank you. Let's all stand with the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have in your packets this evening a correction minutes from our previous meeting on March 14th. Any questions, comments, suggested changes, otherwise I would seek a motion to approve this.
Hello, this is Commissioner Reed. There are two instances where I believe there are scripters errors with respect to the recognition of the votes for the last meeting, the first member hearings, which shows eyes four. I believe that should be three. Similarly, I believe there's another instance also where by reflects four versus three, I just want to bring that to your attention other than that.
With the approval, the eyes on the approval section here too. The minutes.
In two places, the approval of the minutes of February 14th in our hearings should be three votes. Thank you, Commissioner. With those corrections, I would seek a motion to approve those.
Subpo.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich?
Yes, motion carries. So, we have this evening the recognition of Officer Robert Bob Casiadas and his dedication, commitment, excellence, and professionalism as a police detective and DEA task force officer. Commissioner Reed?
I would be Commissioner Polk, in case. But I'd be honored if Commissioner Reed would like to handle this. So, Bob, why don't you bring your family up? Come on up, I don't fight, at least on the first date. Is he a good dad? All the time?
Yes.
Smart move. There might be a restaurant in your future. So, on behalf of the Payless Park Police Department, I'd like to recognize the service of veteran Payless Park Officer Bob Casiadas. Officer Casiadas has proudly and faithfully served the Payless Park Police Department for the last eighteen years, twelve of which were in specialized investigative assignments. These specialized investigative assignments include seven years as a Drug Enforcement Administration Task Officer, Task Force Officer. He also served as a team that investigated high-level domestic and international narcotics traffickers, providing exclusive enforcement of federal drug laws. Bob's career has also involved serving as a supervisor in the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force, the South Major Crimes Task Force, and the Southwest Major Case Unit. In a smaller agency of our size, we utilize these task forces as added resource for our department. Those officers who are assigned are extremely busy and work with a selfless dedication to the group. Participation in a task force will require additional time away from family. Working major cases assisting other law enforcement agencies often takes place at night and on weekends and can make family life challenging. Bob's role, serving as our lead detective investigator, both in these task forces as well as within our own division department, requires a level of motivation and commitment to solve complex, long-term investigations into various types of violent and property crimes. Today, almost all criminal investigations are quite time-consuming, as well as labor-intensive, requiring advanced and specialized investigative skills and techniques. We salute Bob's commitment to duty, service, and his contributions to the greater good. Payless Park Officer Casiadas' work ethic and professionalism is an inspiration to our organization and is an example for others to follow. I'd also like to thank the other members of the department who came out and supported Bob. We appreciate the fact that when one of our team members is on a task force, you guys are working doubly hard behind the scenes. On behalf of the Village of Payless Park Police Department, I acknowledge and appreciate the sacrifices made by the Casiadas family, as well as in the way he serves the community in so many capacities. As a small token of our appreciation, I'd like to present to you a plaque to mark this well-deserved recognition, suitable for hanging on a wall. There you go. I don't want to drop it on your head, man. And because you can't eat a plaque, I give card to Capri Restaurant. If you'd like to say a few words, there you go.
I wasn't expecting this. I'm honored for receiving this award. I'd like to start by thanking my family. I think this reward should go to them for putting up with many years of call-outs, late-night phone calls, random changing schedules, and babysitters, and always having a coming home to them being positive and happy and kind. If it wasn't for them, I would not be able to do what I did. I also like to thank the Village of Payless Park and Chief Joe Miller for giving me the opportunities to work with some of the law enforcement's greatest employees from all over the state. I was honored to be able to work on all these task forces for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. You're welcome to stay along with your family, but you know, you might have a more pressing matter. Thanks again.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to proclaim Arbor Day in the Village of Payless Park. So, I'm going to actually read this proclamation. Whereas the Village of Payless Park recognizes that its trees are priceless resources that can be, whereas it is, whereas it is the responsibility of the Village of Payless Park to encourage a preservation, planting, nurture, and care of trees, whereas it is also the responsibility of the Village of Payless Park to provide the opportunity for education as residents regarding trees and to maintain the integrity of the native woods of the Village of Payless Park. Whereas to further promote the above goals, the Village of Payless Park continues to support the tree body, the committee of the village that works to attain these goals. Whereas through the diligent effort of the members of the tree body, Payless Park Garden Guild One and the Public Works Department, the Village of Payless Park to achieve the designation of Trees in USA for 2021, whereas under the auspices of the Payless Park Tree Body and the Payless Park Garden Guild One, the Village of Payless Park will celebrate its thirtieth annual Arbor Day in the park program on Sunday, May 1st, 2022. Now therefore, to recognize those achievements, be resolved, the Village of Payless Park hereby proclaims Sunday, May 1st, 2022 to be Arbor Day in the Village of Payless Park, and that be observed in educational program while upon hundred days at the Payless Park Public Library. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are retained or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted via motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to improve the village's application for the State of Illinois Special Events Retail Liquor License and Irma Special Events Liquor Liability for on-line park to be held on Friday, September 16th, 2022, and Saturday, September 17th, 2022. Item B, to approve the invoice of some of our estate dated March 28th, 2022, $125,138.46. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Subpo.
Second, sorry.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Any items that play business could be brought to the council. Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any recommendations? So, we're going to move to some information updates, public works, the streets, preparation report. Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a couple of items on the agenda. The first is regarding the boilers here at the Capter Center. The boilers here are the originals. Over the last five years, they have been repaired numerous times. This past winter, one boiler went down and could not be repaired. The second boiler is currently running, but has had problems and needed to be addressed the last three weeks. It also would not keep up if the temperatures dropped for a prolonged period of time. The village asked for proposals from Dykstra, who currently has the maintenance contract for the Village HVAC Systems and Environmental Mechanical, who previously had contracts with the village. The proposal from Environmental Mechanical was to replace both boilers, and their cost was $47,400. The village received multiple proposals from Dykstra. The village can replace the non-working boiler for $17,314. However, due to the age of the boilers and the recent repairs, Public Works recommends replacing both boilers currently for a cost of $34,101. This work would need to be done when the overnight temperatures do not drop into the forties, and this project would be paid for with money in the general fund in the current budget. Does anybody have a question regarding this? All right, well, I'd like to make a motion to waive the bidding process and to approve the proposal from Dykstra Heating and Cooling in the amount of $34,101 to replace both boilers here at the Capter Center.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is regarding the replacement upgrade of the Partridge Lane Lift Station. Over the next few years, the Public Works Department would like to start replacing the controls and adding generators to some of the older outdated sanitary lift stations. This year, Public Works would like to upgrade and replace the Partridge Lane Sanitary Lift Station. This station is over twenty years old and does not have a standby generator. Currently, if power is lost for a long period of time, the wet well must be monitored and pumped down to eliminate backups, or a mobile generator must be brought to the site and connected. Public Works would like to replace the controls and pumps at the station and add a generator and an automatic transfer switch. Public Works saw proposals from two companies that have done work in the village for the lift stations. We received a proposal from Metropolitan Industries for equipment not including new pumps using airways for installation for a total cost of $124,886.44. We also received a proposal from Flow Techniques to provide new pumps and controls using Mark Mechanical to provide the generator and installation for a total cost of $109,637.64. Based on cost provided, we would like to choose the Flow Techniques Mark Mechanical proposals, because $110,000 was put into the 2022 budget to cover these costs. However, due to it being delivered during the weeks between forty and fifty of the year, we are pushing that budget amount into the 2023 budget. If that makes sense, right? Say that again. Anybody have any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to waive the bidding process and approve proposals from Flow Techniques and Mark Mechanical in the amount of $109,637.64 to purchase and install new equipment for the Partridge Lane Sanitary Lift Station.
Second.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And the last item on the agenda is regarding an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal maintenance. The current intergovernmental agreement between IDOT and the village covering costs for maintenance and electricity for two intersections in the village is expiring soon. A new IGA is required for 119th Street and St. Moritz and for Lake Grange Road and at 131st. At both locations, the villages are responsible for 25% of the electric cost, and at 119th and St. Moritz, the village is also responsible for 25% of maintenance cost. I'd like to make a motion to approve the new IGA with IDOT to cover the cost of electricity and maintenance for the intersections of St. Moritz and 119th Street and Lake Grange Road at 131st Street.
Second.
Any questions? If none, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And one announcement for you, chipper service starts Monday, April 11th. The chipper will start on the east side of the village and will continue west until all public streets have been serviced. All the list of dates for the entire season are on our website. Please put your branches with the cut side toward the street. Don't make them longer than four feet long, and no, what's that thing called?
Buckthorn.
Buckthorn. I was, burrs were my head, buckthorn. And if you'd like to receive wood chips this fall to be dropped off to you, you can call 708-671-3721, and that concludes my report.
Thank you kindly. Commissioner Reed, the building and public property report.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a report and two other matters to address with you this evening. The first, residents are reminded to be aware about scam tactics. With spring approaching, residents are being advised to be on the lookout for scam artists posing as contractors. Some of the warning signs that you need to be aware of are, people say this door-to-door, professionals do not do this. Claim to be working in your neighborhood and notice that you need repairs. Offer a free inspection, which always turns up with a major repair. Tell you that you need to act right away. Tell you that they have leftover materials from another job that you could use, that might be paid in cash. They do not provide a detailed contract, and, but that is, let me ask for a large down payment. Make sure that anyone doing work for you is registered with the village and has pulled on necessary permits. The building department is there to help protect you from those scrupulous individuals. We may reach that 708-671-3730 to verify if a contractor is registered with the village. During the time period from March 9th to March 23rd, fifteen permits were processed, resulting in $3,512 in permit fees. Twelve inspections were completed during this time period. Another matter for your consideration this evening involves an application filed seeking consolidation of three parcels containing a total of 84,344 square feet. The application was for a plan of consolidation. The owner would like to consolidate those three parcels into one lot so that a building permit can be issued for the development of a single family home. Each of the three parcels that comprise a certain property are substantial parcels, two of them less than the minimum one-acre requirement, the other less than 150-foot required for a lot of age. Per Section 1286 Title II of Code, substantial continuous parcels under common ownership are to be consolidated into a single lot. While the applicants have not yet submitted a permanent application for the new house, they have submitted a plan of consolidations, and it is a necessary step, pardon me, in the process for the construction of the home. In December 2021, the applicants requested a signed hearing variance to allow for the construction of the new home. The ultimate board of bills held a public hearing under request on December 8th and made a recommendation to approve. The CBA vote was six zero with one absence. The signed hearing variance was approved by the village council. On December 13th, 2021, as ordinance 2021-33, the council vote was four to zero. With respect to the platform consolidation of 71, we seek 7919 West McCarthy Stat recommends approval. Prior to making an official motion, I will ask if there are any questions related to this matter. Hearing done, I'm moved to approve ordinance 2022-09, and ordinance approving a plan of consolidation at 7919 West McCarthy Road in Payless Park, and would seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you. Second matter for your consideration this evening involves the ZBA 2020-03, and ordinance extending the time period for compliance with Section 1264-09, Sub A of the Payless Park Code by six months with respect to the corner yard setback and rear yard setback variations approved pursuant to ordinance 2021-11 adopted April 26, 2021, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Corner Side Yard Setback and Rear Yard Setback Variations." On April 26, the council approved ordinance 2021-11 granting this corner side yard setback variance of 23 times seven and from the required 50-foot setback. Every yard setback variance of thirty feet from the required 50-foot setback to allow for the construction of an attached garage addition for the property commonly known as 1210066th Avenue, the council vote was five to zero. Per Section 1264-09 of the Code, no variation relative to the erection or alteration of a building or structure shall be valid for longer than one year from the day of the approval of the variation unless a building permit for such direction or alteration is obtained within such period and such direction or alteration is stated and proceeds to completion in court with the terms of such permit. The applicant has not yet submitted, excuse me, the applicant has not yet submitted for a building permit. The applicant has stated that the original contract was not the project and may have had a difficult time securing a new contract. Per Section 1264-09C, the applicant has requested a six-month extension for the approved variances to allow for more time to apply for and obtain the necessary permit. Prior to making a motion, I will ask if there are any comments. There were, I'm moved to approve ordinance 32-31, an ordinance extending the time period for implied with Section 1264-09A of the Payless Park Code by six months with respect to the corner yard setback and rear yard setback variations approved pursuant to ordinance 2021-11 adopted April 26, 2021, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Corner Side Yard Setback and Rear Yard Setback Variations," hearing 21-00 South 86th Avenue, Thomas Perrin, and would seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
Mr. Director, through there, do you have any comments to run anything on surface evening?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. With that, can I give you my opening close prayers without messing up? That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public health and safety, Commissioner Polk?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the activity report from the 14th of March through the 27th of March, the year of our Lord 2022. We had 1,922 calls for service, so we're back up to about our average. Wrote thirteen adjudication tickets and an additional twelve traffic tickets, fourteen written, and nineteen verbal warnings, and additional seventeen case reports, unfortunately four accident reports, and two adult arrests, no juvenile arrests, impounded two vehicles, performed eleven formal senior checks, and an additional nineteen citizen assists. So that is what the Payless Park Police Department is up to for the last couple of weeks. And then, just a couple of quick announcements. Again, we're focusing this month, like we do on most months, on safety in our roadways. We urge drivers to slow down, buckle up, and don't drive distracted or impaired. We're focusing on major routes, secondary streets, and side streets as part of our aggressive effort to crack down on speeding and enforcing other traffic laws. But we urge citizens to always drive with caution, recognize that driving is perhaps one of the more dangerous things you do daily, and we all want to keep our roadways safe for everyone. So if you see our activity out on the streets, know that it's with safety in mind that we're pulling those people over. And then the second announcement today, it's that time of the year. So the Payless Park Police Department again is happy to offer free bicycle helmets to all Payless Park youngsters. We think, and I believe the mayor is in agreement with us, that all bike riders should wear bicycle helmets. If you stop into the Payless Park Police Department during normal business hours, we'd be happy to pick one up for you that fits your head and let you take it with you. We've got some great biking venues here, trails, and some terrific places to ride. We want you to come back from your ride as well as you were when you went out on your ride. Again, it's important to wear a bike helmet. Each year in the United States, about 800 bicyclists are killed, and about another half a million end up in the hospital emergency room. About two-thirds of those deaths and a third of the injuries involve the head and the face, and wearing a helmet can reduce the risk of head injury by bicyclists about as much as 85%. So again, we'd encourage you all to wear a helmet, and in order to foster that encouragement, we're offering free bike helmets whilst supplies last at the Payless Park Police Department, to Payless Park residents during normal business hours. If you can't make it during normal business hours, send me a text or a message, dpolk@paylesspark.org, and we'll see what we can arrange for you. But it'd be nice if you came in so that we could make sure that the helmet is correct for your head size. Chief Miller? Anything else you'd like to add to the reports today?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you for your service. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. A council finances report, I'm going to handle that this evening. We have an agenda matter to approve issuance of alternate revenue source bonds in the amount of $3 million for the purpose of providing funding to repair, maintain, and improve the local road and roadway drainage systems. maintain, and improve the road and roadway drainage systems and other related capital projects. There is a strong need to repair and improve roadways and related stormwater drainage systems in our community. The village is fortunate to have strong revenue sources available to pay principal and interest on the bonds while still needing access resources to provide additional roadway improvements in the future. The village council adopted ordinance number two thousand twenty dash oh five on March ninth, two thousand twenty, creating a local three-cent municipal motor fuel tax. Revenue collected from the village's three-cent municipal motor fuel tax as well as collections from the village's one-half percent non-home role municipal retailer's occupation tax are being pledged to pay debt service with no impact to property taxes anticipated. Village staff estimates that the village's three-cent municipal motor fuel tax will bring in one hundred and eighty, ninety-eight thousand annually, and that the one-half percent non-home role municipal retailer's occupation tax will bring in three hundred and eleven thousand annually. The Dells area has been identified as the area most in need of improvement considering the extent of not only roadway improvements needed, but also related stormwater drainage improvements that are necessary to help maintain the integrity of the roadway surface well into the future. Funding from the bonds will pay for roadway improvements beyond just the Dells area. Expected roadways to be improved are still being evaluated by village staff. Through the village's underwriter, RW Dare, the subject bonds were entered into the municipal bond market this morning, where several entities placed orders to purchase the bonds at a combined rate of three point four to eight percent. The bonds were issued with stated interest rates ranging between three point five to four percent and annual debt service payments ranging from two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five annually over the life of the bonds to two thousand and forty-one. The bonds sold at a premium with total proceeds from the sale equalling three million, one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. After fees, the issuance cost three thousand, three million, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-five dollars and forty-one cents will be available for roadway related improvements. Spirit has provided a preliminary timetable for this. That's already happened. So staff recommends that the council authorize the issuance of alternate revenue bond source bonds in the amount of three million dollars, and the sale of the bonds this morning is contingent on our approval this evening. So, the recommended motion is to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two ten titled "An Ordinance Providing for the Issuance of Three Million Dollar General Obligation Bonds, Alternate Revenue Source Series two thousand twenty-two" of the village of Payless Park, O'Callaghan, Illinois for the purpose of constructing public improvements within the village providing for alternate revenue source and the levy of indirect annual tax sufficient to pay the principal while paying interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. I have, anyone who wants to move?
I'll make the motion, but I have a couple of clarifying points or questions. But I can wait till after we get a second.
We get a second.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, Alan and the team, y'all did a terrific job here, and I really appreciate the way that you were able to put this group of not only requests for bonds, but also a very straightforward pathway to how the bonds are going to be paid off. So in three sentences, Alan, I'll give you plus or minus one. The mayor's already explained it once. Could you explain again what this means to the village occupants in terms of debt service?
Well, you know, debt service is going to range anywhere between, I think it says in here, anywhere between, it was two hundred and ten and two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And right now, the village can easily afford to pay this. Over the last couple of years, a lot of good things have happened. One is the village issuing the three-cent local gas tax is offering revenues to be able to pay this debt service. And then, the non-home role sales tax has been doing really well the last, more than the last year just because of the way fair legal decision, Oscar funding, funding money for roads and infrastructure. And then, kind of the gravy is, a few years ago, the state raised the state gas tax nineteen cents, and the village is able to share in part of that revenue as well that it wouldn't have had prior to two thousand and fifteen. So all these resources coming together are allowing the village to not only pay for the debt service, but really have funds available in the future for road programs and in the future as well.
So, thanks very much. Second question, when might we expect access to the bonds?
I know the final closing is on the twelfth of next month, so it should be made available at that time.
And do they come to us as a lump sum?
Yes, those ones will get wired into our bank.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
How long?
How long?
How long before we can put a plan together for how we're going to allocate them?
Plan is being put together as we speak. Drainage plans for the Dells, I should say, final plan is next week. They'll put the estimate together, so the first year we're going to spend, it's basically about a million dollars a year for the next three years. The first year project will basically entail the Dells, but also there's a few other streets that have a middle section that we'll do also. So once I get the final drainage estimate, put the payment estimate together, we'll see what we can get in the first year. I would hope that we'll bid this sometime in May, since I don't have to wait for add-up approval, which usually delays us three to four months. I can probably bid it in May, hopefully they go on a rainy summer.
That's all I have.
Excellent. So I think Alan touched on this, but this entire plan, Alan, only deals with our current needs, but the money generated from, especially the three-cent motor fuel tax is going to assist us in building up funds for future road projects so that we don't anticipate, as it stands now, having to rebound out, rebound out in two thousand and forty. So this is kind of a permanent plan, obviously subject to future councils, of having our roads paid for on a going-forward basis.
Something we've only been trying to do for track twelve.
Yes.
Twenty years. There you go.
Just before we vote, again, thank you, Alan, and putting this together really, and it was easy to understand too, which was great for me. And Mike, thank you, because I know you've been working tirelessly trying to figure out which roads went, and I know everyone always wants to plug you to know which ones are happening, so I'm sure the Dells community and some of those surrounding streets will be thrilled to know that they're first. And, you know, everyone else hold up, wait till we finish that, we'll figure out who's next based on what's the worst in the village at that time. But thank you.
Oh, we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you for all the hard work. Mayor's report, I don't have anything I particularly want to talk about this evening.
Still there.
So, clerk, carry on. Excellent. Manager Bean, you have an item.
I just have one item for the council's consideration, and that's our tent, tent flooring, lights, and staging for the twenty-twenty-two Autumn of the Park Festival. We received word a few weeks back that our current vendor for our tents the last few years, Ultimate Rental, is no longer able to service our account. They don't stock the big tents anymore. We looked around for our vendor we had done business with prior to that, that we were very happy with. They were also second runner-up in the two times we went out to quote, in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. And so we called Big Tent Events, and they gave us a quote of seventy thousand, eight forty-eight fifty for all the tent and equipment rental for this year's festival. They are a little higher than we paid before. Mainly causing that is price increases, the tent alone, and also largely due to labor costs. So, this is what we have. We're going up in cost. I think this is probably here to stay, these increased costs. But the vendors stocking the big tents seem to be an issue going forward. Big tents did service their account for several years before they lost it to Ultimate and a slight price higher before. So, staff's putting in before the council to approve our equipment rental for our Autumn of the Park Festival for Big Tent Events, Carroll Street, Illinois, for costs of seventy thousand, eight forty-eight, fifty cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Big Tent Events at Carroll Street in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight forty-eight, fifty to provide tents, floor lights, and staging for the twenty-twenty-two Autumn of the Park.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Any questions? Will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Millich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Manager Bean. I don't have any announcements this evening. Citizens, if there's any, anyone in the audience like to address their council at this time?
I just wanted to say something. Thank you, Rick, and everyone who volunteered to run the Breakfast with the Bunny over the weekend. I was out of town, but you filled me in and told me what a great turnout and what a wonderful time it was, so I really appreciate your effort and the team that volunteered their time to come out and make that happen. I think we had, you said like around fifty or so people and children having a great time, and thank you to the center for providing the breakfast, and so thank you.
With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn at this time.
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Millich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you and good evening.
Take care and be safe.
Be good.